Thank you, everybody, for being here. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission meeting for May 13th, 2025, and ask Bridgette to recite the protocol for online attendance, et cetera.
Good evening and welcome to May 13th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. This portion is a special meeting, and we are live on PC TV as well as our language translation is definitely up and running as well. So we just wanted to start this meeting with us to recognize some former commissioners that we haven't been able to have the chance to because of our pandemic and other things that have been going on with the city. So I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Ruddock to start us out.
Thank you, Bridgette. Yes, as Bridgette said, tonight is a special occasion. Prior to the regular meeting at 7:00, we have the pleasure of honoring four planning commissioners who left their offices in the previous years. And I was fortunate enough to work with all four of these folks. And I was amazed from my earliest days on planning commission to learn at their sides and work side by side with them. Each of these four folks, three of whom are sitting here, Jimmy Benjamin, Sarah Polger, and Brian Holt were, and Hazel Johannis is the fourth one. I was amazed at the subject matter expertise and knowledge that all of these folks brought to their role as planning commissioners, combined with incredible work ethic and good judgment to always find a way to help Half Moon Bay adhere to our land use plans and everything that we had to, and worked so hard to make Half Moon Bay an even better place to live and work. So I'm pleased that we're honoring you folks with this reception tonight. Would anyone else like to say anything before we break for our reception?
I guess now that I've been up here a little while, I realize how much work it is. And so really, honestly, I would say thank you so much for all those years of doing this because it's really just for Half Moon Bay. And that's a real, I don't know, noble commitment. And so, thank you all.
I would also like to say the same to each of you. I like going back and listening to old meetings, and I've learned so much from all of you, all three of you, and Hazel's not here, but thank you so much for your service and your expertise and the willingness to volunteer. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. And this lavish reception is in your honor.
So I just wanted to say a couple of words, and only because I think I might be the only person in staff that's here tonight that has been here since y'all were on the planning commission, since about 2013, 14, 15 or so, when you guys were actually before the planning commission and very involved in the general plan and the LCLUP. And so I think behalf of Jill not being here, but I worked pretty closely with you guys, and I just wanted to thank you. It was a lot of, we did, there's a lot of work that happened behind the scenes of just really just being involved in a lot of Adcock meetings and lots and lots of hours and so, and a lot of input. So thank you for doing that for our community.
Yes, indeed. Thanks so much. And we have plaques in honor of your service for those who haven't already received them. So with that, we can enjoy some refreshments.
Yeah, there's refreshments, and we'll be back on live. If there's anyone, I don't know if there's anybody from the public on Zoom that would like to speak. I know that there's a few people on there, so you could raise your hand if you'd like to say a few words. Seeing none. Okay, we'll be back at 7:00 PM.
Back in session for a regular meeting of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission, May 13th, 2025. And do you have more details about the protocol for calling in, or have you covered that as much as we need to?
We're back on, and I just wanted to start by doing roll call, and then you can do the pledge and so forth. Commissioner Gossett, here. Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Commissioner Rems.
Here.
Commissioner Goran was here earlier but had stepped away, so will not be attending the rest of the meeting. And then Chair Ruddock.
I'm here.
We have four commissioners. We have a quorum.
And I'll ask everyone to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight is approval of minutes. Here, I'll give you that, Mike.
Sorry. Sharon.
We have minutes from March 25 and April 8 that if commissioners have digested these, we could have a motion to approve those. And I guess I had to have to express my disappointment in that since it was an elegant, low-cost method for law enforcement during the dark hours. A pedestrian could get past, a bicyclist could get past. It's just automobiles that would be restricted. And it doesn't seem to me that it's much of a time for the Coastal Commission to be getting so strenuous about issues when you consider how they soiled themselves last week with their decision on the Pacifica seawalls. But it would be interesting if we could get reports from staff when such come around as to who at the Coastal Commission filed this appeal and what they cited when they did that. It would be informative to you and to the public, I think, in preparation for an eventual hearing, I would suppose. That's all that I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
That's all I have, Chair Ruddick.
All right. In that case, I will close for now the public hearing, and we will go to our next item, which is notification to the commission of the director's intent to approve a temporary use permit at number two Miramadees Point Road.
Yes, commissioners, that project I helped with. So it's a coastal development permit for the Half a Bay Golf Links 2025 temporary events. And they plan on having one temporary clear span tent that's 60 by 100 with the ancillary that's 15 by 20 entry canopy and a 20 by 30 prep and busing tent. Nothing's changed. They've had this, as you know, for the last 20-plus years. And so we're just renewing that for this 2025 year. So if you have any questions, I can try to answer them. And we do have Bruce Wessel here representing the, he's the applicant. So if you have any questions, he can answer as well.
No, we appreciate that. It always leads to our annual expression of it being too bad that staff has to go through that, but it's for a good cause. What I meant was, it's a shame that the bureaucracy is such that staff has to go through that.
Correct. Thank you. So we just needed an acknowledgement, I believe.
Well, I move that the commission acknowledge receipt of the notification.
I second the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Our first public hearing item has to do with the program review of the vegetation management and goat grazing on city-owned properties. And who will, who will present on this for Doug? Senior Planner Doug Garrison, thank you.
There it goes.
Did I understand from the staff report that there would be one presentation covering both of these separate items? Great.
Yes. The, there are two separate agenda items, two separate permits. The city is the applicant for one, and sewer authority Midcoast Side SAM is the applicant for the other one. There's a lot of duplication in this because these are existing permits. This is more of a five-year check-in. And it didn't make sense to sort of drag this out through two separate presentations. So I think we'll cover it in one. And then I think Marlene will guide us from there as far as if the commissioners have clarifying questions, do we need to sort of limit them to one permit or the other? Or are clarifying questions okay? And then at some point, we will, to make sure we have a complete record on both items, we will have to have a little separation. And Marlene may have a couple of words of guidance on that.
That's right. I could say a few words on that now, if that works. So they are two separate items. So as Doug said, there will be, but a lot of overlap. So there will be one presentation on each or on both. But again, because they are two separate items, I'd recommend that there be, after the presentation concludes, that we make clear we're focusing on the first of the two CDPs on the agenda, that we have an opportunity for public comment on that item, and that planning commission questions, if they're common to both CDPs or the overall grazing program, that those could be asked under the first agenda item. But if there are components of your questions that relate to the second agenda item, that you hold off on those until you're hearing that item and that deliberations focus on sort of each individual CDP as well.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, good evening. The record, I'm Doug Garrison. I'm the project planner. I was thinking about this, and I kind of, I think this may have been the first permit I brought to the planning commission when I started here, and it may well be the last permit I bring to you, as I have an imminent retirement coming up. So there's a certain amount of symmetry. Does any question, the location, the area shaded in blue are the city properties, the red is the SAM property?
Can we, can we have that on our monitors, please? Sorry, Doug. There we go.
The covers both the east and west side of Highway 1. Most people are familiar with the east side. They're commonly the Beechwood, Glen Creek properties of fame. And so we've gone over a little bit of this, that it's two items, one presentation. Just want to introduce a couple of people. Helen Walter works for Public Works. She's taken over a lot of the sustainable projects. So she got drafted to work on goats. There's another person, our biologist, Jessie Brenton-McBean. She works for both SAM, the SAM property and the city properties for the ongoing monitoring every year. And she's, she's remote, but she's logged in. So Bridgette may want to just pay attention if she's raising her hand. At some point in the presentation, I will turn it over to her for a few slides. And also, Tim Costello from SAM is here if there are questions for them. So in general, the SAM grazing plan is on the north side of Bev Cunha's Country Road. The green area is essentially where the goats are not allowed to graze. The yellowish tan is where they are. And that green includes a 50-foot buffer from the riparian. One of the permit requirements was to keep a 50-foot buffer from the riparian vegetation. There's a similar requirement on a portion of the city property, this area. Can people see the mouse moving around? Or do I need a, does the laser work?
Yeah, we see, we see your mouse. We see a mouse.
So this very western portion here of the city property, it's near Pillar Cito's Creek, and so there is a restriction, maintain a 50-foot buffer in this area. There's also, it was a cow trans mitigation project where they had to build a frog pond back there. The city basically just hasn't gone back there for a variety of reasons. It's difficult to get the goats there and with the 50-foot buffer, there's not much room to work. As we move over to Beechwood, Glen Creek, again, these no-go areas are mostly wetlands that have been identified through previous studies. There was, on this project, it was approved by the planning commission and then appealed to the city council, although before the city council heard it, issues were worked out with the city, the appellant, and some biologists. And they expanded the no grazing area somewhat, modified the conditions of approval through a CDP amendment signed off on by the planning director at the time. And then the appellant withdrew that appeal. So SAM, they actually, their permit goes back to the application to 2014. We got it to hearing in 2018, got it approved by the community development director. The city permit lagged a little bit behind. That went to a hearing in 2019, and it went to the planning commission. The main reason why we're here, both permits have a condition that says that there has to be a review by whoever the decision-making body was after five years. And frankly, goat grazing was new to all of us, and it was put in just because we, we didn't really know what was going to happen. And so to make it clear, this is not a sunset date that says the permit expires. What it says is you have to come back. And for SAM, it was the planning director. For the city, it was the planning commission. And since we're, we've just combined them both at the planning commission tonight rather than bifurcating it because it just seemed to make sense. But that condition provides, I addressed this in the staff report, but it provides some guidance on what the planning commission could do. They could say everything's fine and just say, keep going. They could say, come back in five years or some other term. They could potentially just say, we think planning director, the CDD director could manage this. It doesn't necessarily have to come back here. And so that's up to the planning commission to decide tonight where they want to go on that. I would note that our biologists, they do annual reports. We had them for this hearing prepare a summary of the last few years worth of reports, which was attached to both reports sent to you. And it concluded there were no substantial environmental issues associated with the grazing, had not affected ESHA, no signs of increased erosion, that sort of thing, no And so based on that, we're pretty comfortable with this project. The general process managed mostly through the conditions of approval. Every year, the biologists go out on the site, do an assessment, they look at what's growing out there, what the weather's been like, and then they, they track all the ESHA areas, the no-go with a GPS unit, and they stake out the areas where the goats aren't supposed to go. And then the sheep herder follows along and puts up a temporary fence where they're staking things to keep the goats and sometimes sheep out of those areas. Couple of points. One thing is, we thought it was always going to be goat grazing, but then we found, I've learned a lot about goat grazing over the last five years, that it turns out they often use a combination of sheep and goats because they eat different things. The goats like the green leaves on the brush and that sort of thing, and the sheep like the grassy materials. And so they can adjust that mix as they go, depending on what's growing there. The other thing we discovered, because we said there would be no mechanical equipment, that especially when they started and the sites were very overgrown, they did have to use, limited use of a weed whacker, just to clear a little path to put the fence in. And so we've allowed that with the biologists on site to clear everywhere they're working before they do that and while they're doing it. And then it's, it's, once it's all set up, they're what we call paddocks. They subdivide the property into smaller areas, and the goats come in trailers, and then they go into the first paddock. And then as they're working their way through there, and that's being tracked by the, everybody, there's a second paddock, and they will be moved in, they'll move into that one. So that prevents overgrazing. We're able to, in real time, move the goats around and keep track of things. And then they'll pull up the fencing from the first paddock, move that down, leapfrog to the third one, and so on. And then when they're through grazing, biologist documents the site conditions and reports the findings to the city with recommendations for future. Make it clear, this is a fairly dynamic process. The conditions give quite a bit of authority to the biologists to modify the protocols. They can expand the area where the goats can't go, just based on the conditions in the field. So it changes a little bit every year. This is the fun part, grazing in action. This is actually a video, but I don't know if it's going to let me play it here. Oh, well. Aside from the entertainment factor of watching them in action, there's some educational parts to this. This was, I think, in the first or second year of grazing. And if you look kind of closely, you can see the stalks of, I think it was probably fennel growing there. They've been stripped of all their leaves, but they're still standing, and the goats are busy sort of stomping all the grass into the ground as they're trying to get to the fennel and other green leaves. And this is relevant to something we're going to get into in a couple of minutes about how to measure that activity. In this case, there's a condition that said you have to leave six inches of stubble ground to, when you're done. And in this case, you know, it's pretty clear, the fennel stalks are three feet tall, the grass, a lot of it's over six inches, but it's, it's been bent over, it's been stomped into the ground. And that's why we're recommending a different way of tracking this. Oh, we do have action now. Oh. So again, you can see the goats, they're just going after the green leaves. That's what they're into, and they're, they're just sort of stomping what's left of the grass into the ground. So that leads me to a couple of proposed changes. This applies to both permits. There's condition C6 grazing. And this one, it grew out of, going back to 2014, 15. On the SAM project, that was originally going to use pretty much exclusively mechanical equipment, mowers, that sort of thing. And so one of the biological assessment that was prepared was based on that assumption that there would be fairly heavy-duty equipment out there. And working with wildlife agencies, they came up with this protocol, which said you could mow the vegetation down to, I think it was like a foot, and then after the biologist cleared it, then you could mow it down some more, but you had to leave six inches there. And when I got involved in 2018, SAM said, you know, everybody likes goats, let's just do goats now. And so we, we had this existing report, and we confirmed with HD Harvey, the firm that prepared it, if there are any complications with goats. And they said, not really, you should probably keep them out of, you know, the real sensitive areas. And so we didn't want to restart the whole process. We were also under a lot of pressure from the fire marshal to get something going. So we repurposed a lot of their protocols, again. So we, we repurposed a lot of their protocols, again, based on this being mechanical equipment. And one of the things we found is that the goats don't, they don't know what six inches, well, actually, they do kind of know what six inches is, if you look at the photos, but it's a condition of approval. It states you shall not, you know, take out more than, you have to leave six inches. And realistically, even if this was a crew of skilled landscapers, I don't think anybody could guarantee six inches. So we are recommending some changes to that condition. And so, just quickly, we'll get into this a little bit, you know, during the deliberations, but we're striking out the part that's, of this condition that says a minimum average vegetation height of no less than six inches shall be maintained. And then, we're shifting over to recommendations in our most recent biological report from SWCA, which recommends changing to residual dry matter methodology, which is better when you have mixed vegetation, where you have the shrubs, the brush, and grass. You know, Jesse will get into that a little bit, a couple of minutes here, to explain what it is and why it would be better. This one only applies to SAM. One of the original conditions, as I mentioned, was maintaining a 50-foot buffer from the edge of the riparian vegetation along Kehoe. And again, that was based on assuming there would be, you know, mechanical equipment in there that, you know, could, you know, injure California red-legged frogs or San Francisco garter snakes. Most of these protocols were specifically to protect those two species. And again, with the switch to grazing, there's minimal potential for harm to wildlife, and that's pretty well documented in a number of professionally-prepared studies. Jesse can get a little more detail on that. One thing, when we don't go in, let the goats into that buffer area, is it facilitates the spread of more non-native invasive weeds, limits the effectiveness of the fire fuel reduction, and there is, and again, I'll let Jesse handle this, but there are a lot of studies that indicate that actually, if it gets too overgrown, it's difficult for the California red-legged frogs to fight their way through it. And from a habitat perspective, it's often better to thin that out somewhat. And so, again, the proposed change essentially is to strike the part about the 50-foot wide buffer. Still gives the biologist the authority to impose more rigid restrictions based on observations, baseline conditions. It just eliminates the strict 50-foot buffer. So I'm going to, Bridget, I'm going to go through this slide and then turn it over to Jesse, so you might want to be ready.
She's on.
Okay. So the reason why we're, we're considering this residual dry material protocol, it's, it's more appropriate measure for judging grazing effectiveness on this type of ecological setting. It's well-suited to adaptive management, accommodates changing conditions each year, the biologist retains control over the grazing parameters, length of grazing, restricted areas, the amount of vegetation left each year. And it, it helps us achieve the main goals of these programs, to reduce fire fuel. Again, this is, it, it all started with safety, and it's still an issue. Much of the city's been reclassified, and the most recent fire hazard maps is high or very high hazard. It's an effective way to, we need to manage invasive weeds and maintain quality habitat for wildlife. So it's always a balancing act from day one. We're sort of going back and forth with fire, trying to make something that works for their needs, for safety for the public. These properties do abut directly onto developed residential neighborhoods, and also to protect, you know, sensitive environmental resources. So I'm going to turn it over to a real scientist now, and let Jesse explain what RDM is and why, some, some concrete examples of it, and how it would work for us.
Thank you, Doug. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes, indeed.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you all for having me. And yeah, I'm very happy to be here to talk about this project. It's been near and dear to my heart. I've been here since the beginning of the goat grazing project, so I have seen it evolve, and it really has become a very seamless goat grazing machine. So RDM, the residual dry matter, the reason for that change, as Doug has already explained, is that this is a bit of a more accurate way to assess how much vegetation and vegetative matter remains to protect the soil following grazing, as opposed to just looking at the height of the grass that's left. And so, RDM measures the amount of dry grasses, forbs, and also the leaves that are left on the shrubs that are out there on a plot of land, and it measures this in pounds per acre. And so, the way that we do this is by collecting and weighing clippings of vegetation from a small sample area. And you'll see, the photo I've included has a hoop on it, and within that hoop, you would clip all the vegetation out of that little hoop, dry it, and then weigh it, and then we do some calculations to extrapolate how many pounds per acre of vegetation remains on the site. Now, if there was a shrub that was overhanging this hoop, we have, we would collect the leaves off of that, because we're looking at the vegetation that the goats would be removing. And so, this allows us to identify how much fire fuel load remains, and really helps to gauge how much vegetation is left. Once we do, we usually do a handful of these clip plots, and then what we would do for this program is establish a photo comparison of different parameters. So for example, we would say a 500 to 800 pounds per acre area looks like this versus 800 to 1,200 looks like this. So we'd establish that photo comparison, and then we'd be able to use that for ocular estimates throughout the rest of the property, instead of doing quite a few of these clip plots. So that makes it a lot quicker. So on this next slide, just so that you can kind of see what those pounds per acre would look like, this is an example of about 1,000 pounds per acre. So you can see that there's still quite a bit of standing vegetation, there's some that has been trampled down, and the way that I estimated that is just based on my previous experience estimating pounds per acre. If we went out and did a clip plot, it may be a little plus or minus there, this is just an approximation. That's why we would establish those photo comparisons at the beginning of the year. The next slide, awesome, thank you, shows inside the fence, something I would say is about 800 to 1,000 pounds per acre, and on the outside of the fence, you'll see that there is a significant amount of vegetation, which is where we started, before the goats were grazing in there. I'd say that's over 2,000 pounds per acre. That's a ton of forage for those guys to eat down. The last photo, unfortunately, the foreground shows pretty high vegetation. I'd say that's standing at, you know, over 1,500 pounds per acre, for sure. But if you look inside there, where those goats are standing, that's more around the 350 to 500 pounds per acre. You can see a few little bare patches, the goats have grazed that down, and those goats are ready to move to the next paddock. We wouldn't want to let that ground cover get any lower than that. Okay. So then, the last slide, couldn't help but wanted to just talk a little bit about the benefits of this program. So as Doug spoke about earlier, we have a couple of program goals here. One is to reduce fire fuel loads. I think that it's pretty easy to understand that we are reducing vegetation, we want to reduce the vegetation that's there, the latter fuels by grazing that out of there. But then, when we start talking about managing for invasive weeds or maintaining quality habitat for wildlife, it can be a little bit harder to see, so I wanted to make sure we had a minute to talk about that. Well-managed grazing has a lot of benefits for habitat for wildlife. One is facilitating litter decomposition, nutrient cycling, and water infiltration. So, you know, grazing is a natural process, we have wild herbivores, and so, a lot of plants and nutrient cycling processes are actually very integrated with herbivores, grazing the vegetation down, digesting that vegetation, re-establishing nutrients, passing that along, and then also, that nutrient cycling can increase the productivity of the plants that are growing, which increases water infiltration and will actually increase soil porosity. So when there's more vegetation growing that's healthy, that has a bigger root system, that'll increase soil porosity, and will actually increase water infiltration and allow, instead of water flowing off the surface, will actually allow for water to be captured and infiltrate better. Removing target invasive species by timing the grazing for when these plants are reproducing, we can remove the seed heads or remove the flowers of invasive species, and therefore remove or reduce the number of invasives that are present. And then, also increase soil stabilization. So the removal of standing dead growth actually increases new growth. So if you're grazing off the thatch or that vegetation that might be matted down, it allows more sunshine to get onto the soil, it warms the soil more, and allows for more springtime growth. And also, grazing stimulates root growth. There's been quite a few studies that show that the pulling of vegetation will actually, when a herbivore is going to eat it, will actually stimulate the plant to grow bigger, deeper roots, which again, increases soil stabilization, increases that soil porosity, and increases water infiltration. There's also been some other studies about the benefits of roughening the soil, and so when goats or cattle are walking around in areas and creating a little bit of a roughening of the soil, that also allows for more infiltration of water and allows for more soil warmth and allows the vegetation to grow more. So just to sum up, monitoring RDM allows for more informed adaptive management and improved rangeland health, while also meeting our grazing program goals. And so, I think that transitioning into an RDM program will allow us to better capture the type of vegetation that is being grazed, and continue to see the success of this program moving forward. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Jesse. And so, moving along, we did receive some comments after sending out the notices. It was a series of comments from one single commenter. They've been forwarded to the commissioners. The first, it was a chain of emails with Dr. Mark Jennings, he's a biologist, the city has used him on a couple of projects. He designed our frog tunnels out at the corp yard. Is considered an expert on California red-legged frogs. We're not, we did not see the original communication with him from Mr. Benjamin, but in the inquiry that was, the response that was in the chain of the email, Dr. Jennings essentially said that there are numerous examples of well-managed grazing programs coexisting with California red-legged frogs and San Francisco garter snakes. He did mention that he didn't think it was particularly good idea to allow them into the wetlands or riparian vegetation, and I note that, as we've already covered, they are not allowed to under either of these permits, and we're not requesting modifications that would allow them to. The second set of comments focused more on previous construction activities on the east side of the highway, on what would have been the Glen, Glen Creek Beachwood development. It goes on to note that there were, may have been a lack of permits, the work was not completed per the requirements of Caltrans, and other things. And our response is that it's an interesting history lesson, but as we've heard from Jesse, if there is a problem with stormwater runoff from those properties into the Kehoe water course, it's not from the goat grazing. If anything, it's been reduced from the goat grazing. So based on the evidence that we have in the record, staff is not recommending any changes based on that comment. The recommendation, review all the materials. Again, this is where we'll probably sort of break things up by agenda item. We are recommending the two conditions be modified. Two of them are on SAM property, the one with the six-inch stubble only is the city properties. And then, again, on that requirement for the five-year check-in, we may want to have some discussion on what everybody's comfortable with and decide how to proceed from there. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Doug. I guess at, at this time, I'll ask if there are, if commissioners have questions for, clarifying questions for staff. Commissioner Rems?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, and maybe it'll turn into a series of questions for staff. One is, have, have you determined what the ratio is between the grazed area and non-grazed area? In other words, is there a percentage, 40%, 60%, what is it?
So you're saying, on a specific parcel, is 60% of it being grazed and 40% not grazed? Is that the question?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know that we have an exact number. I mean, we could look at the, the maps and the GPS data that biologists gather, but I think it's, I mean, I would probably say it's less than 50% is being grazed overall, but at most, 50/50.
I agree with you, because I'm just looking at the maps, and I'm saying it's about half and half, it looks like, on practically all of the parcels.
I think that's a fair assumption.
Yeah, and that, then the question I have is, in the non-grazed area, is that all riparian and wetlands, or is it other, other things in there?
Well, this is where the adaptive management comes in. What was originally excluded were the 50-foot buffer from the Kehoe riparian area. And then, on the city properties, there are, I think it's a little complicated, because the Planning Commission approved it, then during the appeal process, there were some changes made that expanded the no grazing area. But essentially, the wetlands that have been mapped, no grazing was allowed there. There's not a specific 50-foot buffer or anything. And then, there are some areas on the city property, on the west side of the highway, down by the SAM sewer plant, there's that Caltrans- down by the Sam sewer plant, there's that Caltrans mitigation pond for frogs. It's also Pillar Cidos Creek riparian area. There's a condition on the city permit that says you have to have a 50-foot buffer from that riparian area. But we've not done any vegetation removal in that area. So we're not requesting any modification on the city permit as far as buffers, just the six-inch requirement.
Yeah, that's what I was leading up to, is if you're not managing that area, that non-grazed area, is year after year, that vegetation just falling over and creating more, more fuel? And what do you do with it then?
You might wind up writing an environmental impact report going in there to clear out some, it's...
Is your assessment now, or has anybody assessed what state that's in? Does it look like it needs an environmental impact report? Or does it look like it's still manageable? Or does it look like it's really getting to a point where there may be a hazard there?
I may, well, there's a couple of factors that we look at. And one is the proximity, under state law for fire, it's proximity to residential development. And so it's an area, there are some back there to the west and south. There are the scattering of houses and farm buildings back there. For us, the critical area is, you know, the subdivisions that run, you know, further towards the highway and on the other side of the highway. I think I might defer to Jessie, if she's willing. She's spent more time back in that corner of the property, working with the goats and the goat herder, and she could probably explain what the existing conditions are and why we're staying out of there.
And before, before we go to her, Mr. Chairman, did I hear, hear her correctly indicate that in certain sensitive areas that they go in and occasionally adapted? Do they adaptive management in there? Or did I mishear her?
At this point, anything that's, that's mapped as ESHA, riparian area or a wetland, we're not proposing to go into.
Yeah, okay.
There are other studies in other places that I've seen that indicate sometimes it is beneficial to have some managed grazing because it, like if you go to the Central Valley where they have the vernal pools and the fairy shrimp, what happens is if they just get overgrown with invasives, it sort of destroys the habitat for the fairy shrimp. There was a nature conservancy property where they did a study, and they found the area where they, they stopped grazing cattle got worse, the area where they kept grazing got better for fairy shrimp. So I don't know if we can make a blanket statement, but there are specific times and places where it could be helpful.
I'm glad you brought up vernal pools because I'm very fond of vernal pools. And, you know, this, this property may be ideally suited to punch some dimples in it or something and, you know, make some vernal pools out there. What do you think?
It's out of my league.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Were we, were we waiting for the biologist to respond to one of Commissioner Rem's questions?
I am here and I'm happy to respond. I think Doug asked me what is located over by the Caltrans mitigation pond. And in that area, there is some pretty large eucalyptus trees. And so that's one of the reasons that we've excluded that area from grazing. Eucalyptus isn't really a good forage for goats. And it's also pretty overgrown with poison hemlock, which is also not a good forage for goats. Although goats will eat poison hemlock, they can only eat in a certain amount of it before it's toxic to them. And so we've eliminated that area because the, the forage that's available to them is just not really good for them to eat.
Thank you for that.
Can I just, I think if I could restate Commissioner Rem's point, I think I heard him say basically, with the monitoring we have, how do we identify if there is all, if there is a substantial hazard in the areas where we don't graze? Does the existing wildlife monitoring, or do we have a process of monitoring that will surface to us if there is a substantial hazard of fire?
I can address that. We've had meetings out in the field with, with the fire marshal, the biologist, everybody. And interestingly, the, the first time we had to do this, the goats showed up and they were happily eating all the invasive fennel, which we were happy about. And then we got a call from the Audubon Society saying that that was their favorite bird watching area because the migrating songbirds like fennel. And they, there've been a number of observations of birds there, and they were concerned that this was sort of damaging the overwintering area. So we went out there with aerial photograph with the fire marshal, the biologist, and we just marked it up. And so we asked the fire marshal, what do you need? You know, what's, what's the, what do we absolutely have to have for safety? And then we got some buy-in from the biologist from the Audubon, say, okay, what can we do? And, and by the way, the goats are standing there looking at us the whole time. And we came up with this, kind of by the seat of our pants, that we would keep some areas, we'd keep the fennel growing, other areas, we'd let the goats go. And then year to year, we could adjust those areas so that the fennel could grow back a little bit in one area and get cut back in other areas. So we've done that in consultation with the fire marshal. So I think they are sort of the experts on what's a fire hazard and proximity to, you know, infrastructure like the sewer plant and the farm buildings back there. And I think we would, we would meet with them, figure out, okay, what is it you really need from us? And then we would sort of look at the biology, look at the ecological setting, and see what can we do? And again, it might, we might get into an area where it's just not good for grazing. We could have to come back potentially with an amendment to say it's, it's an imminent safety hazard, and we need to send a crew in there with, you know, some tools to, you know, clear out some designated areas. But I think it would, we're a ways from getting to that kind of decision.
Can I also add one other thing? The fire district did issue a correction notice in May, May 3, 2019 initially, and has not issued a further notice, correction notice because of the work that's being done. So I did want that for the record.
I, I guess the question is, six years ago, we know the fire marshal was out there. At some point between six years ago and now, the fire marshal's been there at least one more time and had the goats adore him. The question is, what's the, what's the appropriate frequency of monitoring from the fire marshal's perspective? And is that something we need to attach as a condition of approval to make sure we don't have a substantial hazard?
So that would be something like the city and Sam will consult with the fire marshal every two years or something like that to assess the effectiveness of the fire safety, something on that order?
I think so, assuming that this has already happened for this project.
Yeah.
And they've said, how, I guess the question is, how often do they monitor?
I'm not sure. I, I know if, if we don't graze enough, they tell us.
I guess it's just...
They're, they're out there looking at stuff. I know that.
Yeah, I guess it just, I mean, I would love an affirmative letter from the fire marshal that they feel that there's an appropriate level of monitoring happening at this location because, and maybe the two-year thing works as well, but just as a follow-up item, hey, they have some kind of process in place that they follow, and there's a standard, and they feel that it's the appropriate standard.
We can request that. We, we have no authority over the fire district. They're totally separate.
It's okay. Just let us know if they're not responding to you. I'm sure we have some people here, assuming other people want that.
Yeah, I, I think it would be useful. I think in, if people living in those residential neighborhoods, the, the, the fire marshal may have a little bit of a habit of flagging it when it's a problem, but you don't, you don't know except by absence of such a thing that it's not a problem. Are there more clarifying questions?
Can I, can I speak to that?
Of course.
I just want to be really clear about what we'd be requiring here and say a condition, which would be a condition for the city as the applicant, or Sam as the applicant, to seek consultation with the fire marshal. But as Doug was saying, we have no control over whether or not they would come out.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it would be seek consultation and report back if the fire marshal's not being responsive.
Commissioner Gossett?
Through the chair. I know on private pocket parks, or not pocket parks, pocket lots that are not developed yet, the fire marshal notifies the landowner that they need to mitigate or the, the fire department will do it and then just add it to their property tax. So they do have some sort of monitoring program within town. So I'm cer, well, I, I don't know what's going on with the city properties, but I know they do it on the private properties yearly.
Yes, I have neighbors who have received the so-called mow or be mowed letter. Other clarifying questions?
I have just a couple because I'm new to understanding the residual dry matter. Can, can you explain again why you picked the 500 to 1500 pound per acre standard? I, I think I know the answer, but I just wanted you to answer it one more time if Jessica or Doug, whoever wants to answer it.
I'll defer to Jessie on that one.
Yeah, can you guys hear me? So the 500 to 1500 pounds per acre, as I showed in the photos already, 500 pounds per acre is kind of the minimum that we would want to see to ensure that there is good soil stabilization, good cover, that there isn't going to be any erosion or damage as a result of the grazing. The 1500 pounds per acre is kind of a, a goal to maintain between. I included because there are some areas where there's quite dense brush and there's a lot of leaf litter and whatnot. And so I included that as kind of a higher level gauge so that we're not just shooting for one particular number. We're allowing for some adaptive management to meet with goals that seem realistic based on the fact that there is a diversity of vegetation out at these sites. We have patches of shrubs, we have patches of grass, we have patches of fennel. All of those have different pounds per acre of vegetation that remain. And so I wanted to be realistic with that target, that we want to reduce fire fuel loads. 1500 pounds per acre is quite a bit of vegetation, but there may be areas where we can't remove a ton. So maintaining that 500 to 1500 seemed realistic and like a good average to shoot for. That met with all of our goals.
Thank you.
Can I, I have a follow-up question to that. The range of 500 to 1500 seems like a big range. And I'd like to just understand a little bit more. Is it, is it, are you saying that it's difficult to manage it more accurately than that? Or is it possible to ask a question like to, to guarantee, to do as much as possible to mitigate downstream erosion, what the, what the RDM amount would be?
Yeah, so that range is not meant to, to limit the maximum amount of vegetation that can be present. It's meant to provide a goalpost for the amount of vegetation we'd like to see on site. And so I know it does seem like a large range. However, the reasoning for that is that we have not actually established the clit plots on this site. And so I have had to make sure that we are able to adjust our goals to the different types of vegetation that are present to capture more of an average. If I just said everything's going to be 1,000 pounds per acre, it'd be very difficult to achieve that goal because the vegetation out there is different in different patches of the property.
Okay. Thank you. That make, that does make sense. Commissioner Hernandez?
Just to follow up on the point of erosion. So we received a significant amount of documentation on the project around potential erosion and issues that aren't directly related to this project, but what one might consider to be existing conditions. And so could you help us understand the thinking that goes into this 500 to 1500 target and how that impacts erosion, especially around the Kehoe Water Course, which I think is the person who submitted the letter's primary concern?
Can I add on to that same thought? In a, in a very intense rainstorm, not a, like say, an atmospheric river were to come through?
Yeah. So Doug, I don't want to step on your toes if you wanted to weigh in on that.
No, I'll let you.
Okay. So the thinking in the 500 to 1500 pounds per acre range that I provided was that 500 pounds per acre still provides a good minimum amount of vegetation to stabilize and protect the soil that's on site. The photo that I showed earlier in the presentation showed you about a 350 to 500 pounds per acre, which is almost a little bit lower than what I am recommending we shoot for here. The reason being that we don't want to damage or overgraze. And so 500 pounds per acre would be the very minimum that we would want to leave to ensure that there is still good vegetation cover, still good thatch, to prevent any erosion. The six inches of stubble height that we previously had was very difficult to measure or manage because of the way that goats actually graze this property. And so I would go so far as to say that we are recommending a much more effective way to capture the amount of vegetation that's being removed from the site. And because the photos I showed you actually are from this project, you'll see that the recommendations are in line with what we have been doing for the past five years, which have not resulted in any damage to the property. We have not seen erosion, and we have seen a reduction in some of the more invasive species or patches of fennel that were previously on the site. And so the vegetation community is more diverse. It is healthier. We've reduced a lot of the overgrown dead vegetation. And so because of that, the amount of vegetation we've previously removed has resulted in a benefit, and therefore these recommendations are in line with what we have previously implemented.
Well, thank you for that. Amaz, did you want to speak to that question?
If I may, through the chair.
Of course.
I just wanted to add a little bit more context with respect to erosion potential. There are several factors that come into play here. As the, as the writer of the report, Mr. Benjamin, as well as many others, may understand that topography plays a role in erosion. Slopes, when we have high steep slopes, that is, there is more of a risk associated with erosion when it comes to that. when it comes to that. The timing of the vegetation management is also pretty critical as far as the, when we do it. Obviously, if we're doing it right before rainy season, that is a little problematic. And the other thing I just wanted to add was that this is, this program is intended to be dynamic and not static. And so that's why we're doing all the monitoring and oversight. Because if we see things that are happening that are out of line with the, with what we're trying to do and accomplish, we have the opportunity and ability to modify that. So that's really our goal, is that this program is established to be more dynamic and not as static as something like mechanized equipment. Because yes, you could set the blade to six inches and go through and make sure that you have six inches of height remaining, but there's a lot of things that get missed in that approach, too. So I just wanted to add that, a little add-on there.
Thank you for that.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I just wanted to ask Maz or city staff a follow-up question, which is just, I think the answer is yes, but overgrazing below the 500 threshold, is that one of the conditions that you'll be explicitly looking for as part of this project?
Well, I can get back to where, we had some draft language. And so what we're doing, we're striking out the part about six inches in that condition. And then we link this to, in this case, the 2025 summary report from SWCA that applies to both projects, where they recommended switching this method. And we just say that, you know, it would be based on their recommendation of residential residual dry matter, a goal of between 500 and 1500 pounds. Now, we could probably tweak that language a little bit if it makes you more comfortable. I think when the overriding goals in the whole program is to prevent overgrazing. And as long as, you know, we have the monitors out there and the, you know, the goat herders keeping up with moving the fences around. It is sort of self-monitoring, self-correcting, I guess. I don't know that we could say you could never go down to 350, but we could say if something like that happens, then the program will be modified for the coming year to, you know, make sure it doesn't become a recurring pattern. We could add something like that.
I think we can probably talk about that during discussion.
Do you have a clarifying question? If no more clarifying questions, let's open it up for public hearing. I do have one green card from former Commissioner Benjamin, but I feel like he has left the building.
He has, so that's excused. Yeah, he has. We do have one online.
Does anyone else who's here, whether or not you filled out a green card, want to comment to the commission on this matter? Then we can go to online comments.
Okay. Mike Ferreira?
Good evening, commissioners. I was, the appellant referred to by staff a few years back. And one of the reasons was that, you know, that's a notorious property on Beechwood. And that's basically what I was appealing. It's the worst settlement decision I've ever heard of environmentally in the state of California. But we're stuck with it behind us. But what we learned in that process is that due to past practices on that property, the wetland definition is not achieved through hydro soils or standing water, but plant life. And it's the plant life that determines the existence of the wetlands from a technical standpoint. That's why we were very concerned about controlling the process so that the plant life was preserved. Also, then as now, the definition of a buffer zone was unclear. To some people, it's potential issue. To others, it's just a setback. And, but for the purposes of this project, the coastal commission's determination was the six-inch mechanical removal. That's how that got in there in the first place. I remember Director Chris Kern came up with that. So the replacement of the six-inch mechanical removal with goats was worrisome to some of us in terms of being able to sustain protection of the plant life in the wetlands. Some of that was handled through the planning department, as was mentioned to you, and certain areas were changed. But I have to say that all in all, things were okay except for one year. It was very clear, somebody lost control and the goats got in and did a real number on the wetlands close to the highway. And all that was left was, I guess, what we would call junkus. And so we have to, fortunately, we had delineation that we could, prior delineation that we could count on, which I hope your biologists are sticking to. Because we don't want changing delineations based on whether the plants have gone away or not. So I am a little bit concerned about how seriously the goat herders take these boundaries and what's the downside for them if they don't. And regarding the property on the west side of the highway, I would only just like to add that the city-owned property over there, I once had a tour with the Fish and Wildlife people and the city manager at that time. And he was calling almost the whole thing habitat. And remember, habitat and wetland are different concepts. So I'm not, I'm not objecting to what I'm hearing, but I just hope we all process this with care. It would seem to me that if we lose control of the goats again, that there ought to be some sort of reset. Is this really what we should be doing? Because it's much easier to control the mechanical removal. So sorry for going on and on. It's just those details that I wanted to bring to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferreira?
I see no one else.
If there are no other members of the public that wish to comment, we'll close the public hearing and ask planning commissioners for deliberations. Would anyone like to opine? Commissioner Rems?
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to support this resolution as amended by Commissioner Hernandez so we can move forward.
Yeah, I take, I echo you and I take to heart the comments about the risks in such a program. And I, I want to, I want for the commission to communicate to staff the importance of very diligent and careful monitoring, which maybe goes without saying, but I'd like to say it anyway. Are there any other deliberations?
I wanted to know, I don't remember what the amendments were that you were recommending, Commissioner Hernandez. Do you mind reiterating that, please?
It's complicated with the need for the two, acting on the two items as well.
I think the primary intention I have is just to make sure that, as part of the, two points. One is that we request affirmative feedback from the fire marshal that they have a process in place to monitor this area. And to request that the city asks the fire marshal that question on a, well, I think every year, just as part of the process, just to make sure that the fire, as we do this, we should just put it on the checklist of checking with the fire marshal to make sure they're monitoring the areas that aren't grazed. That would be my amended request. And then the second thing is just to make sure that we're paying attention to overgrazing, which for the purposes of this, is anything below 350 was the standard that I heard. So I'm comfortable with that as a standard. And ask that the biologist pay attention to that and any other conditions that might be contributing to erosion from the activity there. You know, just things happen with goats and wildlife. So I think that's, that's the nature of the amendments that I'm proposing.
Doug?
If I may, I think both of those amendments that Commissioner Hernandez brings up, those would be equally applicable to both projects. So I think it's a little bit simpler that way. And we still have to do two separate actions, but I think they can be applied to both equally.
Did you have a slide that had the four actions necessary tonight?
Um, sort of.
Can I also add one other comment that you might have noticed in the conditions? That the grazing season, to allude to Maz's comments about the season, the grazing is often as, like, late, late spring, early summer. And the fire department district has come in and asked us to, the city, to do it earlier in the season due to fire hazards. So it, those, you know, multi-beneficial. The, it helps with the erosion as well as the vegetation management.
I think I heard a request to give you guidance to strike the balance between when the rainy season's over and when we normally start the grazing process. Is that what you're asking for?
I, well, I think the issue is, it's always a balancing act. Sometimes fire wants us to start earlier. But there's always some hazard that it rains and then it starts growing back before you want it to. So, and it's also, it's pretty complicated to, just to get the goats here. They come from the Central Valley and they're in demand. And so, and we also, we schedule them for SAM, for the city property. They also do work for Coastside Land Trust. And then they also graze on lands outside the city and the county. So just logistically, we have to work with the goat company to figure out when we can get them here for a month or two to take care of it.
But, but I don't, I don't believe they're asking the planning commission for advice on that. I know as far as the Coastside Land Trust administration of the railroad right-of-way, they were always motivated to get the goats here before the invasive plants had gone to seed. It used to be August and now it's more like May, if we're lucky. But I, so Commissioner Hernandez?
No, I'm just ready to make a motion if we're ready to move on.
All right. I wanted, I wanted to be sure that we did the motions correctly because it's, and you also wanted input on when, when this program should next be reviewed, right?
Yes.
It has been five years. Does another five years make sense, perhaps?
The original condition was five years. We actually are a little over that now. But that's, that's what's in the condition as originally.
Commissioner Rems?
Mr. Chairman, I would support that, subject to, there's a compelling reason to bring it back to the commission for any reason that staff deems necessary.
And if I may, through the chair, I just wanted to clarify that I know some of these conditions are applicable to both of the permits, but when you're getting ready to make a motion, to be clear, that the, the first item that you're addressing or the item that you'll be addressing in that motion is for the city-owned properties, the CDP for the city-owned properties. And then we'll separately address the other CDP and we'll need to provide an opportunity for a public comment on that item separately as well.
Thank you for that.
These are two, yeah, two separate items. Thank you.
Well, you're an expert at making complicated motions.
Okay. I was, I was, I was reading the recommendation and I missed the term for renewal. What was the number that we came up with? Five years?
Five years seemed logical to me, but I'm open-minded.
I'm good with five years. Okay, I'm looking around. No, no issues. Okay. I'd like to, so I'm going to make a recommendation here to, I'm just going to be clear, to approve PDP 19033 to proceed with the City of Half Moon Bay's Vegetation Management and Fire Abatement Program. And amended to include a five-year review period, where we'll come back to the planning commission, to ask for, on an annual basis, to have the fire marshal affirm that they have a process for monitoring this ungrazed area for a fire hazard and that it satisfies the policies we have around hazard mitigation as a city. And to let the planning commission and/or city council know if the fire marshal is not being responsive to their request. And then finally, to pay close attention to whether or not overgrazing happens using the 350 standard and to monitor for other erosion activities caused by this program.
And if I may, through the chair, just propose a slight amendment to that. This is, rather than an approval of a CDP, it's an approval of an amendment to an existing CDP.
I'd like to modify that so forth.
I'll second Commissioner Hernandez's motion.
If I may.
Doug?
So I get all of Commissioner Hernandez's recommendations for changing. Of the sample amended text for the two conditions that we put in the report, are you concurring with that with the additional language that you've asked about the 350-foot, 350 pounds being the minimum?
No, no, the, the 500 to 1500 is the standard that the biologist has indicated. The 350 would be, to me, an indication of overgrazing. Thank you for asking for clarification on that.
Shall we have a roll call on this? Please, Bridget. I seconded it.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rems?
Yes.
And Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Good work. And now if I understand correctly, we have to invite a public hearing on the second matter at hand, which is, which is PDP 01014. So I'll, I'll ask if there are anyone, any members of the public present or online who wish to comment.
I see none online.
Then I believe we can go forward with deliberations and/or making a motion on this one as well.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
I'd like to recommend the amendment to allow modifications to approved coastal development permit, PDP permit, PDP 10014, located on a portion of APN 048240040, to include a five-year review period, additional monitoring for overgrazing at the 350 standard as the definition of overgrazing, and to ask the fire marshal to provide affirmative confirmation that they have a program in place to monitor the ungrazed areas for hazards conforming to the city's policies for hazard mitigation.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rems?
Yes.
And Chair Riddick?
Yes.
40, pass, approved.
All right. Thank you for everybody. Mr. Garrison, we're going to miss you, but congratulations on your imminent retirement.
Thanks.
That brings us to Director Laco's report, I believe.
Great. If you think you're going to miss Doug, I'm definitely going to miss him. We still have a little bit of time with Doug. Yeah, so director's report, we had two directors' hearings where we reviewed three different permits since we last met with the planning commission. On April 30th, we approved a project at 565 Redondo Beach Road to replace an expired CDP and allow expansion of an existing childcare facility. So it was an expansion of the facility, but not an intensification of use. So they have some extra space now with additional parking and some traffic control measures for regulating, or staggering the times for drop-off there. We also approved a project at 520 Kelly, right across the street at Bike Works, for a self-storage facility in the back of that paved area for about 46 cargo containers there. And then on May 7th, we held a director's hearing.
Sorry, did you say 46 or 426?
46.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's behind Bike Works?
Yeah, yeah. So that's about, about a quarter to a third of the size of the BK Motors facility, so pretty small. And then on May 7th, we had a hearing for an addition to an existing house at 440 Greenbrier Road. And Scott Phillips was the acting zoning administrator for all of those hearings. So thank you for that, Scott. And he was designated as such by me, in part because I brought one of the projects before And then other updates, I think you all got my email that the Hyatt appeal went before the Coastal Commission, the commission was unable to determine that the appeal raised no substantial issue, so there will be a hearing at a future date to be determined. Staff will make a presentation at that hearing. Also, the Redondo Beach Road gate permit was appealed by Commissioners Carol Hart and Linda Escalante. That is scheduled for the June 11th through 13th meetings in San Diego. Staff will attend virtually, and we will also present for that appeal. I also reported out that there was an attempted appeal of an emergency CDP, you can't appeal an emergency CDP, for a State Parks project to divert the coastal trail around the Casamira housing units at Miranda Road and the coastal trail. And the State Parks worked with the attorney there to reach an agreement that, to, rather than divert the path, they are going to change their application, submit a new application for a project to just move the coastal trail back onto the property owned by the homeowners' association there. So move it away from the bluffs and back further, which I think is an excellent solution, actually, for now. Besides that, for the next planning commission meeting on May 27th, we're not sure whether or not we'll hold a meeting. We had two items on that agenda. One of them got postponed by the applicant, which leaves one very small item, so we're going to look at maybe carrying that one over, too. So we'll keep you up to date on that. And that's it for the director's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, do commissioners have any communications they wish to make at this point?
So I, my family is dealing with an issue related to the Palisades fire. We're rebuilding, planning to rebuild a home down there, and as a result of some of our diligence there, we've been participating, my engineering student and I have been participating in a number of events, one of which was a masonry conference down in Southern California, where we learned that the state of California has a master plan to add 500,000 skilled trades people to the building industry, and they are all being trained in sustainable and certified building methods. So Southern California has adopted a lot of this. Unfortunately, none of that's gotten up to Northern California with our community college system yet, but I think there's work underway to bring some of that progress here. There's also some fairly innovative things that are being done to make ADUs more accessible, affordable, and templatized, so it's easier for people to get them built and do it in a way that is, sounds like significantly less expensive than what a lot of people go through today. So there's some interesting things happening down there. There's also a WorkWell conference happening at the end of the month, which is focused on, instead of allowing developer or individuals, not, I should clarify, it's focusing on how one can approach development in an area like the Palisades where 7,000 homes burned down in a way so that instead of everybody being on their own and just focusing on their own property, you develop concepts like blocks that can, that are designed in a way that act as bulwarks against fire. So there's some very interesting things happening in this space, and as we progress with this, I'll try to provide tidbits to people about things that are interesting and actionable, and maybe things we can look at as a city from a fire mitigation perspective, especially as we look at some larger projects or affordable units which could actually function as fire mitigation tools for us down the road.
Thank you for that, and good luck with everything. If there are no other communications, we could have a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Rems?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. We are adjourned.